All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Bladensburg Town Council Work Session for Monday, December the 9th. Can you believe it? It is December the 9th. Time is just flying on by. We're now called to order and will begin tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I saw move.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
Seconded by Councilmember Dixon.
Any corrections or edits to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. Thank you. All right. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda for the approval of the work session minutes for Monday, November 18th. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
No second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any corrections or amendments to the minutes? I just wanted to note for the Public Works presentation, it was Prince George's with an apostrophe before the S, and then County Department, the word "Department" was missing from what should be County Department of Public Works. And then on page two, under item 5E, the SFY 25, at the second to last sentence, under item E, just needs to be corrected. Any other edits from the council? All right. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. The minutes are approved. Next, we are scheduled to have our presentation from Bates Trucking Company. They are coming to us tonight to talk about their recycling electric truck. Town Administrator, did you want to do the introductions?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Council. We're really happy to have Bates Trucking here to talk about their, the opportunity that they're going to be presenting to us. You can go sit down right up there right now. Yeah. So back in, I guess this summer, all of municipalities were offered an opportunity to listen to a presentation on using a electronic, an electric truck. So basically moved from a high pollution gas to electric trucking. And that's something that we've really been trying to work with Bates on as a long-term process because there are some funds from the state that could be garnered for replacing trucks like this. So what they have tonight is a presentation, which I've got out on my screen. I'll share it in a second. A couple of videos that they wanted to share with you. The concerns that staff has, which is the only issues that we have, is not the electric truck itself. It's maybe the fact that we have some tight streets and they do show some videos of some tighter streets, but I have a little bit of an issue still that I think yours are a little tighter than these streets are, but they'll be able to provide some more context on this. So that's really what the presentation, I know that Carolyn is here from Bates and just wanted to give you that chance, that little preview. Do you want me to pull up your presentation now?
Okay.
Okay, great.
I'd like to thank you all for...
Could you just press the button to turn on? There you go.
I'd like to thank you all for allowing Bates to come and talk to you about the concept of the electric trucks. And again, I'm Carolyn Mills Matthews. I'm the Chief Administrative Officer at Bates Trucking. When we went to our Waste Expo, which is just a bunch of trucks and a bunch of stuff related to waste, to the waste industry, we can get some good feedback. Several towns have asked us about electric trucks. Mr. Bates has made it very clear right now, he is not interested in purchasing any electric trucks. And the reason he's not interested is because he also owns another company, which is Unity. They service Montgomery County. Montgomery County forced, required them to purchase CNGs back when CNGs were supposed to be the new and upcoming thing. And so when that contract was over, they could barely get $50 for those CNG trucks. It was, it was not a pretty picture. And so he and his team just really don't feel as though they want to do electric trucks in terms of Bates purchasing. Well, there were, there were several towns who had asked us about electric and zero waste kind of issues. And so we have probably the most municipalities as clients than any other hauler. It was initially, it was the town of Edmundston, Brentwood, Bladensburg, District Heights, Colmar Manor, and Cottage City, I believe. So they all came, and the city of, or I guess the town of Landover Hills. They all came to listen and to understand what we were, the concept we were trying to do. Because there was, when I went to MML last year, Senator, well, he's no longer the Senator, but I guess I always called him Senator Pinsky. He was my high school history teacher as well. But I was telling him about the, the electric trucks, and he said, "Oh, Carolyn, great. You know, we have some money." Again, Mr. Bates is like, "I don't care how much money they have. I don't want to buy it myself right now. I don't mind using it and servicing it." And so before we ever got into whether we're actually, what this looks like, that the Voltaire is this new electric truck. And so we can, you're going to take me through? So if you, yep, if you could go to page eight. So this is the eight. Come on back one more. Okay. Okay. Yeah. So this is a Magnellius body with a Voltaire, which is a foreign, it's not a U.S. company. Voltaire is, I believe, out of England or something, but they are working with Magnellius. This is the truck that was at the Waste Expo that was, it kind of blew me away. It blew me away because if you remember the old sidearms, they kind of did like this. Well, if you have trees, which older communities have, lower electric lines, it was breaking them down, you know? And so we didn't want anything like that. This new truck, if you can go to the next page, please, has, if you can see this black right here on the side, it is called a candy cane. So this, the cans go straight up and dump into the candy cane. I mean, go up on the candy cane and dump in. So it was a better concept than any of these wider ones. Even some of the newer concepts, their candy canes are wide out. This one does not do that. It comes straight down and then out at the bottom to pick up the cane. The other thing this does is that it has, it has a radius, a very tight turn radius, so that if you are in a tight space, the turn radius is just, I don't know if you gave, did you give them this? Yep. So you can see, it's in your packets, but you'll be able to see, this is the normal radius in white, and in orange, the turn radius was much tighter and much better. In addition to this, if there are, huh? Oh, sure. I believe you may have it in your packets, but I'm not... But it has the route, it has, it has, it has a very good route capacity. We are not suggesting that we use this truck for trash right now. We are suggesting that we use it for recycle. So that, we, we, we are, we feel very comfortable, at least knowing that this can support the municipalities for recycle. It requires one person, but in this test, we are going to put a helper with the driver. Now, we really don't have to, but we're going to because we think we have to capture some data. And so what, there are, the driver is, I believe, on this side. Now, the driver will be on your right side. The driver can easily get out, and there are buttons on the outside as well as the inside if they need to get out to like move a cane. They can do that both ways. What we want to do in this, it's just a 30-day trial. So whatever your recycle day is, that won't change. It will just be four of your recycle days. It is just a trial. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But if it works with caveats and as a, as a group, as a team, as a town, you want to make those caveat adjustments, then we can talk about how we get these trucks, or this truck. We're only looking at one. Again, it's four times. We asked them if we could do it in the third, I mean, the fourth quarter of '24, which they were booked, or the first quarter of '25. And the reason we wanted to do that is because most of these trucks are right now in California. They don't have bad weather. Right? Of course not. But they are telling us now, they have trials like what we're asking for in Minnesota right now. So I am really, and they feel very confident that they're going to be working. I don't believe that we are going to be able to do the first quarter of 2025. The more we've talked, the more they've said, "We don't know for sure. We got another test truck on, in production, but we don't know how quickly it'll be ready, and we'll let you know as soon as we can." I don't, I don't think we want to do a second or third quarter. I really would prefer if we can't do the first quarter of '25 to wait until the fourth quarter of '25, just because our streets can get icy. Our treats, you know, they can get, you know, hilly, whatever that looks like, snow, whatever. I think we want to, in a test, use, do it that way, so that, you know, it may, we may have a sunny December, unfortunately, but if we, we can at least try our best to try to pick some inclement weather times. We know that the other times won't be an issue. Again, this is solely for recycle, and we want to be able to help you, we want to help you fulfill your goals. We heard you, but we had, it had to make sense. And so with this, if, 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 we opened it up for all of our municipal towns that we service, we would not be using this for any other municipal towns, you know, that outside of who we service. Because what we, what we're thinking, and again, this is down the road, once we decide whether we like it or not, is who owns it? How does it get paid for? And what, what, what does it look like? So Senator Pinsky was very confident that we, that this, that the state had money for this, in terms of purchase. Bates is confident that what they can bring to the table is the insurance on it. And it's no fuel, but it is electric plug-in. For the 30 days, they're going to bring a temporary one that will be in our maintenance department for charging. We would have to look at that level of cost as well, and what that looks like, and where that would be. You know, then, because we can't use, this truck can't use a normal car plug-in system. So it would be, it would entail using something, you know, more industrial. The training would be all on Bates. They would, they would work with Magnellius to train a driver, or two, or three, on how to use the truck. And what, on the temporary basis, on this, on this trial basis, it would prob, it would more than likely require some adjustments in the town. So what those adjustments might look like, for example? If you could go back, let me see where you are. You don't have it there. So if, right, so...
Stop sharing and then go, stop sharing this one and then go back.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right. I was like, is that it?
No worries. So which one do you, which one would you like for, for the video?
That was the one that had the closest that we could see to a small town. Remember, I told you, a lot of these are taking place in California. They showed us one while we were there in a tight community, which I loved. I thought that was a perfect video. Unfortunately, one of the gentlemen that was there for Magnellius is no longer with them, and they, it was his video. And I'm like, why would you take that video? But they do.
Can I share, can I share with you? Can I share the sound?
Well, you don't even really need the sound if you don't have to. Now, this is a different, this is a double model, so I had to find something similar to show you. But as you can see, this driver is by himself, and he can get out of the truck if he needs to. But if a can is behind a, a car, he can get out, go behind the car and kind of get in. Or if he had a helper, that would be an easier thing to do. Can you stop that for one second? So as you can see how tight those cars are, what the, what they can't be, and this is where the education comes in for that, again, 30-day period, is they can't be bumper to bumper. Because if cars are bumper to bumper, I want to say they have to have a four-foot distance is what they told us. Because if they're bumper to bumper, then it's more difficult for us to get them. Now, we're going to get them in this 30-day, but we're going to also tell you how many times maybe something was bumper to bumper. If we are, if we are telling residents, or you're telling residents for this trial period, either we want, you know, that you need to be four feet away from the next closest vehicle. It would be wonderful if the cans were in between those vehicles, or, you know, on the sidewalk at those, you know, so that they can pull out, and it comes down, and goes out. That would be a wonderful thing. But if not, we will have a helper there to help in this period. If we're looking at 80, let's say 60% of all of the cans are unreachable by the arm, we're still going to go on. We're going to give you a daily, a weekly update on what we saw by street. But if, after that 30-day period, we see that, you know, 50, 60%, we still have to maneuver and do this and do that, the question then becomes, can we, can we make adjustments? What does it look like from week one to week four? Did it get better? You know, did it, that's where we're looking. Because, you know, your footprint's not going to change. You know, it's not going to change. There are electric real load trucks, but most of the time, when you are interested in purchasing an elect, a real load truck or electric, you want your vendor to purchase that truck. So he's not willing to do that. So that's where that comes in. He, 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 this is a trial. So the question becomes, who owns this? He doesn't want to own it. At the end, we talked about potentially where the port towns may own it, or whatever towns come in. That grant money is going to be coming to the towns. This, this grant money won't, we're not, we can help write the grant for you, and we'll be a part of the grant in terms of, we'll, we'll handle the insurance on this, you know, we, we have skin in the game for you. But at, at the end of this contract, what does that look like? Now, if we get this, then Mr. Bates is willing to restructure everyone's current contract because you should get some reward out of this as well. And so if we restructure the contract, what does that look like? And all of those things will have to be sorted out and discussed. But if we have, I don't think anybody right now, we have this, but let's say this works. Let's say perfect scenario, that we get it in the first quarter of '25. Nothing's really going to happen in '25, just so you know. We're going to, that, but except you all say, "Yes, I'm in. No, I'm not. Yes, I'm in. No, I'm not." It takes grants much longer than that to give, get money. So let's say we, we're probably looking at '27 by the time this is ready to go. By that time, you may be in your last-year contract, whatever. We don't want to, we want to give you some kind, what that would look like if everybody, whatever towns participate, this is what your contract would be. Remember, we don't really have to pay a lot for fuel, so that fuel cost goes down. We won't have to pay a lot for employees, which is a huge thing. And so those numbers will go down. It is, and recycle for the county is, is no cost. So what does that look like? And we're not paying a truck note. We're paying insurance, we're paying a driver, maybe a driver and a helper, and whatever ancillary charges that we would have. So, you know, at the end of the day, what does that look like? And insurance and those kind of things, what that would look like. I'm open for any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mills Matthews, for the overview. Are there any questions from the council? I just want to start by saying I appreciate you acknowledging the tight streets. I'm particularly concerned about streets like Tausick, Spring Road, where people park on both sides. I don't know how successful we would be in telling people they have to park four feet apart, but I do acknowledge currently, the recycling has picked up, so clearly they're able to get them off the sidewalks into the street. I just don't know that we're going to be able to be out there measuring.
Well, no.
Your car was not four feet.
So one of the towns thought, because he said, "Well, Carolyn, I think that's an easy enough thing for us to do." He said, "It's only for a month. We can take," what did he, "not permanent, but washable, I guess, washable spray paint after a while," you know, and put, put block, put squares in at every four feet, what that may look like. But that was one of his thoughts. I mean, be open up to whatever you think that would look like, even if it's on one side of the street versus another side of the street. So the people who live on the side of the street where the cans, where the cars are parked, they may have to move their cans across the street, you know, up to, I don't, I don't know what that really would look like anywhere. You know, I think that's something that the towns would need to tell us what that looks like.
And then the other question I had was, in terms of the information we received, it noted there would be two vehicles you were looking, or is it just, okay, just the one?
Just for recycle.
So then, for the cost of the charger installation, because I get during temporary time, they, the vendor would provide you with a temporary charging station, but with the, if we move forward with this, and there has to be a permanent charger set up at Bates Trucking site, would the towns be responsible for that, or would you guys?
I think it will all depend on what kind of monies the grant can provide. I mean, I think we would probably put everything in there, put the kitchen sink, and then we would see what, what we can get. There is also, there's other places for that kind of grant money as well. It doesn't have to just be for the state. So we would help identify what that looks like. We would, we would help write, you know, it if we could. There, you know, and if, I think it's, it would be a strong message, especially since all of the communities we serve are older communities, that if we could write a grant where these communities are, you know, looking to the future, which is clearly where everybody said they, they want to be, I don't know right now whether electric, what that is going to look like in the future, and that's his concern. But for zero waste and they're quiet, so short of a can kind of hitting the top, and they don't really hit the top, I don't know if you could hear that, but they, they are far more quiet than a regular gas, gas or diesel truck, far more quiet than a diesel truck.
That's helpful. Councilmember Blunt, any questions? Councilmember McBride, any comments or questions? Councilmember Brown?
One question. You showed us the Magnellius one with the candy cane arm, but the video showed a...
Right. Because the candy, the candy cane arm is the one we're going to be demoing. But the gentleman, and we had others, and I think you have another video that shows that one.
One of those, one from the previous...
Yeah. I think the problem...
Yeah. That's fine.
Yeah. The problem with that one was, he took it with him, and it showed an older community. So I didn't want to show necessarily, I mean, you know, a brand-new community with wide streets, and I wanted to show, because I, I've been, I know these towns, and I know how, how tight they are. But remember, our trash trucks go through them now.
Yeah.
They go through them now. So I don't, I don't believe that this is going to be a problem going through the street. I think the problem that you are going to have, or you think, we, we all think is a possibility to have, is that as that arm goes out because you have cars parked on the street, that, that's, that's the, that's the challenge.
Did that help answer the question, Councilmember?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Dixon?
Thank you for sharing that information. I did have some questions about the challenges, but you had mentioned about the cold times, so I was worried about the mechanical functionality of it, and also driving through the ice during the cold time, more about the hazardous, but you already said that you're going to wait just to test, so...
I think we should. I mean, you know, I do, because I know, I'm, I'm from Fairmont Heights. I mean, this, 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 this community, and we're in the cold. I mean, and sometimes it can get really cold, and snow, and all of those things. And what happens? You know, trash doesn't stop. It gets really hot, too. I, I think we can manage through the heat, but it gets really, really cold. And so I know with, even with some of these diesel trucks, they won't start in the morning. So sometimes we may be late coming to you, but that's because it's so cold that these diesels, you know, they didn't start, and our mechanics have to come and do some things. So I don't know what it's going to look like. Now, my, our head mechanic, he wants to put the portable electric, or whatever they're going to do that's going to run off gas, the portable electric charger in our, in a bay, in one of our bays, so that it stays warm and everything stays warm. Well, that's just not reality for me. I mean, he can do it, but at the end of the day, we think, "Oh, this is wonderful. It stayed charged. It was..." And then we get it, and the charge is outside. And then, I mean, the, the reality to me is, we have a wonderful opportunity to look at this electric vehicle for our older communities. Why not make it work?
I appreciate that. Councilmember Brown had one more question.
And more, more or less of a statement instead of a question, because I think the other part, too, was just looking at the grant funding and really seeing what it covers, you know, because that's, that's going to be a driver for a lot of things, cost and all of that.
Absolutely.
I think so. Because Councilwoman, on, on the agenda, we'll be looking at the Clegg, which is the, which is actually a specific funding that we are going to look at for the Cola Bus. And they have certain limits for the size of the vehicle and the amount of zero emission reduction you do. So because trash trucks are on, like, on the higher end of it, there's a higher percentage. So it's about 75% that the, that it covers for the cost. So we'd like to try it with the Cola Bus first, and then try then, and then apply for this, and maybe say, like, like Carolyn's saying, '26, '27? And then also then try to pair it with a white paper for Emmy, for the, for the MSEC that, so that you can then say, we could do the charging and everything with it. So we've had a good conversation with the port towns on this item, but we really do see this as maybe a fiscal...
but we really do see this as maybe a fiscal twenty-six, I mean, twenty-seven expenditure for you, if we would do it. Um, so that's where, so we are looking at it, but we just wanted to get the council feedback first. But that's where, from talking with myself and Rod and and Greg, we try to look at it, because all three of us have recycling with the county. Um, and we, I think we just wanna look at an overall plan of how we would either operate it with Bates or operate it, you know, if we would operate um recycling on our own, because that's that, all of our county um recycling does expire soon.
And then just, Mr. Hall, I wanted to get your take on here in terms of your thoughts. I know you're like, why, why? But just, you know, from that Public Works perspective, I'm curious to see what you think about this opportunity.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Ms. Carolyn and uh Ms. Tracy, I've I spoke with them. I was at the um, the little um, uh, I forgot whatever we called it. The little meeting when 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 everybody was down there introducing the electric truck. And I have, I mean, my 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 concerns are on a lot of our streets, we had on both sides, okay? I see an arm that's only strictly on the right-hand side, okay? And I think you you touched on it a little bit about, okay, if the truck is going down and the arm candy cane is on the right-hand side, we have tra, I mean, we have other trash cans on the left-hand side on all streets. So how would y'all basically, you know, utilize that and 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 say that that's, that's kind of a better opportunity when you're gonna have to still have helpers out there with this truck as well? Okay. Mike, please.
Right, you could, thank you. You could park all of your vehicles on one side of the street and then cans on another side of the street. That's an option. And so we're going down one side. That's option one. Option two is that we go down and back up. It's almost like a double yellow line, you know, where where you were not supposed to cross a double yellow line, even though you don't have double yellow lines in your street. You, we go down and we would come back up.
But I get your point, Mr. Hall, because it is gonna extend the time. Right now, the haulers can pull from both sides of the streets. So if they're going up Tilden, they're pulling from the left side, they're pulling from the right side. With this, and that arm being on the right side of the truck, they've gotta go down one side and then turn around and come back down, which is gonna take longer. Also, the vehicle's operating on a battery, so what's that battery lifetime? Because now the truck will likely have to be operating longer than the combustion engine vehicle. Is that where you were going?
Yeah, that's where I was going. And also, when you, when you, if if you, as Ms. Carolyn was saying, you may wanna come back down it, then you'd be going the wrong way.
Oh, yeah.
Unless you have a one-way street, you have a lot of one-way streets.
We have some, I won't say a lot, but we do.
So, I mean, I think that.
Just some idea, I mean, just some things that we have, yeah.
Right, just throwing things out. I think this is the kind of dialogue that we have to have with each town, because we know that each town is unique. And so if you've got a lot of one-way streets, then maybe the option is to park all on one side and to bring the containers on the other side of the street. And then that way, we're we're still going down the street one time for those streets and maybe for other streets. You know, it just depends, it just, it depends on what works and what your residents want, right?
Yeah, well, we appreciate it. We, oh, sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chief.
So the other issue is parking. Parking in a town is already tight. So it's really unrealistic to have all vehicles parked on one side of the street, um, because we just don't have that type of spacing.
Yeah, I think um that, like, the District of Columbia, different places have very similar things when trash is being picked up, that, um, and and that's not even with a side arm. They have when it's trash collection day, on just on these particular trash collection days, everybody has to park on one side of the street so that they can go through and pick up, you know, the the trash. And so it's not just the District of Columbia. A number of areas that have tighter streets have to come and decide how you wanna do it, what that looks like. Um, again, every town is different. And so even, I I I think we have to, we have to get in there um and see what works. I do not expect that it will be perfect day one. I don't expect it to be perfect week two. I expect it to be better than week one, better um than week, week three than week one and two, and better week four. So that's the goal. I'm not asking for perfect anywhere. I don't think we do perfect now, we do the best we can. And so when it, if 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 we can see that it's getting better, and and you can't please everybody, you're gonna have some people pissed off, you know? Just call it like you see it, you know? You're gonna have some people not happy. Right, I mean, it happens. But if this helps the towns reduce the cost of how you're spending tax dollars, I mean, that, that's huge.
It is, we definitely agree with that. Well, thank you again, you and your colleague for coming tonight to share the videos and the presentation with us. And I believe in the next meeting, we have this on the um seven o'clock agenda, so we can vote whether or not to proceed. But thank you so much. All right, so we're gonna keep moving right along. Um, uh, that took care of unfinished business. We're now on item five for financial business with ordinance number zero-four twenty-two-five. This is an ordinance to enact the fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six budget process and codify the town council and public participation process. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the town administrator.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Tenelli, since we are, I wanna keep us on track with timing. So, Mr. Tenelli?
And I, as we discussed the last two meetings, yeah, um, this will formalize the budget process. And actually, um, if this is, if this is approved tonight, we will really start on this calendar within just the next thirty-plus days with the January thirteenth budget review. And just over sixty days now, we're gonna have our first budget session. So time is flying quickly, you know, so it's um. And and then you can see all the dates here as it flows through March, April, and adoption, possibly in May.
Sorry, it's too small.
That's okay.
We appreciate it. And again, thank you for getting us started much sooner in the process to just allow more time and um the necessary additional time to address creativity in terms of things that we wanna do, more time to address really thinking thoughtfully about the cuts that may have to be made. We know things are gonna be different, ARPA dollars will not be there for the next fiscal year. So uh, with that, any questions or comments from the council? I know we've talked about this, what, three meetings now, so. Councilmember Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mister Mister Vito, I just wanna thank you for the hard work that you've been doing through the year. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
Appreciate the numbers.
That's my job.
All right, thanks, everyone. Next, we'll move on to new business with ordinance number zero-nine. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Um, clerk, Madam Clerk, for item five A, did you need to read it again or just at the uh seven o'clock meeting? Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, so uh back to item six A, ordinance number uh zero-nine twenty-two-five. And this is an ordinance of the Town Council of Bladensburg, establishing a framework for the proper care, maintenance, management of public trees within the town of Bladensburg. Getting us ready for Tree USA.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council. This is the ordinance that we need to establish, which will take two readings for um Tree USA. Um, what the town is looking to do is to, you'll adopt a resolution after this that will allow us to enter the Tree USA program. Um, as part of preparation for this, we've worked, um, we're working with um Maryland Park and Planning on a tree review. So we actually will have the inventory of the trees that are in the town, and they actually are working with that now, and they're working with Mister um Mister Hall on that portion. Um, we would dedicate one percent of our our budget, which is what we're doing now on trees and tree rep, and tree um maintenance. But this ordinance in particular talks about planting and removing of trees, trees in the public right-of-way, um permit requirements for for trimming trees, and then enforcement penalties. We'd work with um Mister um Mister Reinhardt on our enforcement policies and also in regards to the permitting process for cutting trees um in the public right-of-way or in on people's yards that are of significant age. So those will be coming to you as we work through it. But we put together this draft ordinance. If there are any issues or changes, we can then make some adjustments to it. But I think it's pretty, um, what we put together is something that starts us off um as a, just trying to codify our planting of public trees, our maintenance of public trees, and then the removal again. And in some ways, the community involvement, which is using the Green Team as our tree board. Um, so those are the things that this ordinance enacts, and it just gets us on the road to being a Tree City USA and being able to celebrate Arbor Day. Um, many of the towns in the area are um Tree City USAs. And so it also is one of the other, um, it's also an accomplishment for our Sustainable Maryland, uh, which is another big deal for the town. So we can add that to our Sustainable Maryland um designation. And that's it.
Thank you for that. Um, did anyone else from the team wanna add anything regarding the resolution? Mr. Hall, I know this falls in your area, um, and did wanna ask the one percent necessary for the budget, would that be placed under the Public Works budget, or, okay, so.
We have a significant budget, um, and uh, please, Mr. Hall, um, just uh correct me if I'm wrong, but when, within our, um, some of our plantings, we we have more than one percent of our budget. One percent of the town's budget is in our plantings budget already. Um, and we've been um leveraging some um outside resources for our tree planting from some grants and town grants and things like that. But Mr. Hall, let him speak a little bit more about what we've been doing.
Yeah, feel free to add anything, Mr. Hall.
Yeah, no, I mean, basically, I mean. No, basically, um, Michelle hit it on the head. I mean, this is, this is, I mean, you know, I'm just now kinda get really involved in it, you know, tree planting and a lot of uh maintenance is is, it just, it takes a, I mean, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a detailed process of of how to maintain a tree, really. I mean, anybody can go out there and plant a tree and, you know, get it to grow and everything like that. But really, maintaining it, maintaining it, you know, our guys down there, we we was thinking about, you know, taking little little training classes and different such little small entities. You know, we've been planting all our, you know, all the flowers and all that, but maintaining trees is a little bit more, little bit more detailed than than just planting, you know, cabbages or pansies out there and anything like that. And maintaining it to where it it grows and and become healthy, too, as well, you know? So we would love to have plenty of champion trees in town, but, you know, not by starting off planting one now. We have plenty of them in in the town cemetery and the um the Boswick House. So those will be, um, you know, will be registered.
That's great, thank you for that information. Are there any comments or questions from the council regarding the ordinance? Sure.
Um, I just wanna say that um this played like a critical role in improving air quality and urban eat, so this is awesome, and I'm really up for this. You know, I'm a urban sustainability girl, so, yeah.
Thank you for that point, it's true. Having more trees in your community does affect the temperature during those summer, you know, extreme heat situations, exactly, and exactly filtering CO2 um on top of the beautification. And as the town administrator alluded to, it also helps with our certification for Sustainable Maryland, as does the potential pilot with Bates. So we appreciate the staff's efforts in really keeping sustainability at the forefront of the things that you're bringing before the council. Uh, any other comments or questions before we proceed? The next item is related with Resolution ten-twenty-five, a resolution to adopt the Tree City USA principles and tree care standards in the town of Bladensburg. We'll turn it back over to Utown Administrator.
So Mayor, since I did, I tried to to wrap the two together. Um, so I'll, I'll to try to to cut my time short on this. But the only other thing I wanted to mention is that one nice value of being part of Tree City is the opportunity for Mr. Hall and his team to work with other municipalities that are maintaining. And that's really what my, is to build capacity within Public Works and within our town by joining some of these organizations and also through like professional organizations like APWA. So when you start talking to other people with the, of the American Public Works Association, and I talked to Mr. Hall about making sure that he has his membership himself for that, but that while as we build that capacity, we're kind of cross-pollinating, which is, again, another tree thing, um, cross-pollinating on this issue. So I think this is a really good opportunity, and all the Tree Cities in the area sort of do get together. So that's the reason why, another reason why we want to sort of take this on.
I appreciate that additional information, it's really helpful and good to see the team leveraging those resources. Cuz you're right, the expertise can only benefit us even more. We're now moving on to item six C, Resolution eleven twenty-two-five, a resolution of support for the Clean Energy for Local Governments or CELG-FY-25 application for medium and heavy-duty zero emissions vehicles, which I'm quite excited to hear about. So I'll turn it back over to Utown Administrator.
So Mayor Council, again, um, actually, I'm really excited that Colmar Manor actually adopted their resolution at their meeting um last week. So we have both of ours, so that um we are both, um, we are both applying for this. And I have asked Rod at Edmiston to also write a letter of support so that we can, because they're not interested, they may be interested in joining the Cola Bus again, especially with the Green Cola Bus. So this would allow us to um replace the current Cola Bus, which has had its issues, um, with a a larger um Cola Bus that actually has more services for seniors and things like that, because it's gotta be a larger vehicle. So um hopefully, we'll be able to find the right vehicle. There's also a couple of interesting options for electric, um, like, you know, light duty, lighter duty electric vehicles. So we'll look at all those, but once we get closer, we'll bring that back to council. But this gives us this initial approval so that we can apply for the grant and put it together. It's due in in late January, but I didn't wanna be in a rush for it, so I wanted to get everything together now so that throughout the holidays, I could have our grant writer work on the best possible presentation. And as part of my, um, as part of my report in the January meeting before we submit, I'll let the council know more directly which vehicle we are applying for.
That is great news. And then I know you said it's due in January. Do you know when the award notification is?
Um, we have been pretty lucky. So when we applied for these grants last year, we received it at MML in like, what was that, May, May-June? Yeah, so they, we received notice in May-June of it. And then we actually got the award, award in October, so, late October. So it's, it's a little bit of time between January and October for the actual award of it. It would be a twenty-six, twenty-seven project, but it's awarded on the fiscal year twenty-five schedule. So, yeah, for implementation, it would be twenty-six. But there are town, I mean, our, um, the Cola Bus is in need. We're loaning out the current uh van to Colmar Manor that we have, which is a hybrid. And so they are using it, and so that's a good thing. But um, yeah, it's just something that we need, and we need to replace sooner than later.
Any comments or questions from the council? You know who I'm looking at over here? And I will just say, while she's coming off mute, it's for two buses, correct? Not just the one, is this the one I saw for two?
We're trying to just do, we were, we were, what we need to figure out is if we can leverage two, but we probably will leverage a larger one, because I don't think we need to, because we are, our ridership isn't that big yet. Um, but we are looking at a different, what we also are looking at is if we can see if they would do a lighter duty vehicle, because they have those like, like those, I don't know if you guys seen them, they're like, they're, yeah, they're like little transit bus, they're like um, like trams. But they're all electric, and they can be used during like a summer period. So, and it's just something that we, and it's kind of like, and I was trying to see if I could get the chief a gator, some gators, even though he might not want electric gators, but to try to get some some gator type um, type all-toeing vehicles that are electric, because they they are actually, but they're not um heavy-duty enough for this um, for this, for this particular grant. We'd have to ask for it as a trial program. So this is all in the same vein, I guess, um, the same timing with Maryland Energy, cuz that's when, you gotta do all of their stuff in January. So, sorry, I I told you a lot, but you, I just wanna make sure.
Thank you. And I do, I don't think we need to. I mean, if you wanna get one to have a standby in case something may happen, I could see that, but.
case something may happen, I could see that, but the ridership is not that much, and then it may, it may get that, it might get that way, but as long as we have a wheelchair lift, and it's pretty.
And then, in terms of this seating capacity, I'm thinking about the van we used Friday for the U-Log, do you remember what the capacity was for that?
I believe that's a twenty, was that a twenty-five passenger? Yeah, so if there's a twenty-five passenger, that's, I mean, that's, we're looking at between fifteen and a twenty, twenty passenger, but it's the wheelchair lift that takes up more space, and also for the electric, because of that, they, they're not quite as big as what we had for the, what we rented, I mean, what we had for, from the service, so that's the hard part, is trying to figure out a bus that's the right size, so that's what I'm saying, we'll be, that's what staff's going to be working on with the grant writer, are the different sizes and options, because that also dictates the percentage of the grant, which is what I was explaining with the Bates Grants, is that there's a certain amount that you have to leverage with, that it reduces your emissions, and the size of it and what you're replacing, so we're, we'll be replacing that Cola Bus that I think has a fifteen to seventeen capacity.
Okay, Councilmember Blunt?
Yeah, because it's smaller, it is, all you need, you don't need a CDL, if I'm not mistaken, and that would save the money in paying somebody, a professional or somebody who does it.
You're correct, the current one does not require a CDL driver, and that's one of the issues that we would have to do, so if you move to the twenty, it would be a CDL, that's my understanding right?
Yes.
And so, Councilmember, is the threshold ten to fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, so as long as we stay under that, we're fine, okay. Okay, any other questions from the council? Okay, all right. Next, we will move on to item D, Resolution twelve-dash-twenty-twenty-five, a resolution appointing council members and staff to the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, known as COG, to the COG boards and policy committees for the twenty-twenty-five calendar year, so I'll turn it back over to town administrator Bailey Hetchpeth.
Thank you, Mayor Council, this is the very last thing for tonight on this particular agenda, I want to say that to, to, to kind of give everybody the, there's only four items that they're asking us to do the appointment for, because some of the, I guess, some of the appointments are two-year appointments versus one-year appointments. The human, the Human Services and Policy Committee is the first one, the next one is the Climate and Environmental Policy Committee, the Chesapeake Bay Resources Policy Committee, and the Food and Regional Agriculture Committee, those are the four committees they're asking for, we're also on the Region Forward, which Mr. Tenelli actually serves on, and then I'm on the, I know that the chief is also on the Public Safety Committee, and that doesn't require, I mean, that, that's not requiring a reappointment, and we also are on the IT Committee, which I'm going to ask Ms. Watson to, to go to, because I am struggling to get to that one, and then I'm on the C A O Committee, so those are the other committees that COG has, but I just wanted to have that for public transparency, but these are the four that COG is requiring new appointments, or renewal of appointments for.
Thank you for that overview, town administrator, at this time, council members, did anyone want to adjust the appointments from the twenty-twenty-four calendar year to something else, or you're good, Councilmember Dixon, we're good, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember McRae, Councilmember Blunt? Okay, excellent, and then for our staff, I know you indicated the policy committees that you're on. Were there any changes, or is everyone fine continuing with those?
Yeah, they didn't ask us for changes to those, they're just assuming that we're all, we, that we'll all restaff them, so.
You're locked in.
They only asked for, yeah, they only asked for yours, so, I mean, Chief, do you, does anybody have any issues with theirs, Chief Vito?
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, excellent, so it looks like we'll just, in the seven PM meeting, vote to reappoint everyone to the same designations that they had for twenty-twenty-four. Moving down our list for tonight's work session, that was our final item, any other items before we adjourn tonight's work session? Hearing none, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
I saw a move.
By Councilmember Blunt, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Dixon, any comments or questions before we adjourn tonight's meeting? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of "Aye."
Aye.
Any nays, the ayes have it, we're adjourned, we'll see everyone back at seven PM, thank you.